Lastly, Mr. Dean Moore, opening statement, two minutes, sir.
Yeah, I was on council for eight years from 2010 to 2018 and we organized and professionalized the city. We hired our first city manager, did enormous infrastructure projects, got things rolling to where we are today. Part of our strategy was to improve our, our streetscapes and make the city a better looking place, which we just had a ribbon cutting last Friday on some of those projects that we had started long ago. And I'm looking forward to getting back into it. We're running into some turmoil with our transition in the administration. And that's one thing that I had a lot of experience in, in the early stages of developing our professionalism. I'd like to get back into it and make sure we keep going in the right direction. The next part of our strategy is to get with the businesses and help them develop much better in our downtown area. So I'm looking forward to it. I've been committed to Clarkson. I've been here for 24 years. Been in public service with Clarkson for 14 years. And like I say, I'm looking forward to getting back in. Appreciate it. Well, actually I haven't left it. I've been on the Historic Preservation Committee and the Charter Review Committee and as well the Technical Advisory Committee for the zoning. So I hope we can continue moving forward as we emerge from this pandemic.
Thank you, Dean. We appreciate you. Okay, we're gonna start, we're gonna try to rotate who leads off the questions. Susan, if you'd go ahead and unmute, we're gonna start with you. Clarkston is in the process of rewriting its zoning ordinance. What would your approach be to that process, Susan? Two minutes. You're gonna have to unmute, Susan.
Yes. I am on the zoning rewrite technical advisory committee. I have extensive experience as a zoning administrator from the city of Atlanta. Zoning is critical to the future development of our city and to how our development fits within our existing community. It's a win for the city that we are working on our zoning rewrite. The citizens insisted for a long time that this process be undertaken by a professional firm. And the city went out for an RFP and has hired Pond Company, an excellent firm, to do this. We need to approach zoning mindful of future development and current development. To make sure that when we make changes in our zoning ordinance, we avoid unintended consequences. That we are enacting zoning regulations that protect the health and safety of all residents. That's actually the basis for zoning. We need to continually work and listen to the voices of citizens, of businesses, and of workers here in Clarkston to understand their perspective on how Clarkston ought to move forward.
Thank you, Susan. That's, that's two minutes. Thank you so much. Shayna, I'm gonna ask you next, if you will unmute, please. Where Clarkston is in the process of rewriting its zoning ordinance, what is gonna be your approach to that process?
Oh man, this is such a crazy question now that we've lost, well, I don't, I don't know if I'd say, lost our city manager. We no longer have a city manager and now we're gonna be waiting for our temp, I guess, yeah, temporary city park. I'm just, I, I'm very nervous about this election because of the current events that just evolved. I mean, I, I hope that voters understand how important that is, that it's very important that they do their research on all of these candidates to figure out who is actually gonna stick to what they're saying and get things accomplished once they're elected. That's all I wanna say for now. Now we have two YTs.
Thank you, Shayna. I think YT has joined us on another connection. YT, are you there and can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm there. Sorry.
Oh, awesome. Great. This, this is much better. Great. So the question is to you. Clarkston is in the process of rewriting its zoning ordinance. What would your approach be to that process? Two minutes. Did we lose you again?
Sorry, having all the issues it would take today. So being one of the council members that spearheaded the efforts for the zoning rewrite, definitely wanna take a hands-on approach. I know the impact that zoning has on everybody's quality of life. And we wanna make sure that we support that and ensure that we write it in a way that has a more hands-on but inclusive process. But to have all of the residents in the city of Clarkson to be a part of and give their input so that we can be more equitable city and have a, a better impact on our economy as well as how we develop the city throughout.
Thank you, YT. Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Clark, how would you approach Clarkston's zoning rewrite process? Two minutes. You have to unmute, sir. I'm sorry. I should've asked you to do that.
This area is kinda new to me, but if I'm elected, I will research those concerns and get back with, with everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Dean Moore, how would you approach Clarkston's rezoning, zoning rewrite process? Two minutes.
Well, like anything, you need to find out all the information and get professional help. That's what we're in the process of doing. Approach it to protect the neighborhoods. We look forward to development, but it needs to be smart development. There's no specific area of the city, since we're already, that would require a, a installation of some type of a huge development such as a, a new housing development or whatever, unless it's downtown. Our downtown area does need some improvements, but we need to protect the neighborhoods from, and that's what zoning does. Zoning is to protect the city. And so I want to make sure that we continue protecting the city as we do move into smart development. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Councilmember Carroll, this, as you know, the city is in the process of rewriting its zoning ordinance. What is your approach, approach going to be to that process?
Yes, I'm very familiar with zoning. I was on the planning and zoning board for three years before I was in the council. And since I've been on the council, I've been the chair of the Housing Infrastructure Committee, which has dealt with many different zoning issues. So I've attended all the public meetings and all the online meetings regarding the zoning reform and heard the feedback from public. I've seen the written feedback as well as the in-person feedback. And my impression from talking to the Clarkson residents is they want more downtown development. They want more housing options in Clarkson. There's a lot of people in Clarkson, they're in apartments, they're looking for houses in Clarkson but aren't able to find them. There just aren't that many available. So I think we can encourage downtown development, encourage
I am on the Zoning Rewrite Technical Advisory Committee. Um, I have, uh, extensive, uh, experience, uh, as a zoning administrator from the city of Atlanta. Zoning is critical to the future development of our city and to how our development fits within our existing community. It's a win for the city that we are working on our zoning rewrite. Uh, the citizens insisted for a long time that this process be undertaken by a professional firm. And the city went out, uh, for an RFP and, uh, has hired Pond and Company, uh, an excellent firm to do this. We need to approach zoning mindful of future development and current development. To make sure that when we make changes in our zoning ordinance, we avoid unintended consequences, that we are, uh, enacting zoning regulations that protect the health and safety of all residents. That's actually the basis for zoning. Uh, we need to continually work and listen to the voices of citizens, of businesses, and of workers here in Clarkston to understand their perspective on how Clarkston ought to, uh, move forward.
Thank you, Susan. That's, that's two minutes. Thank you so much. Uh, Shayna, I'm going to, uh, ask you next, uh, if you will unmute, please. Um, we're, Clarkston is in the process of rewriting its zoning ordinance. What is going to be your approach to that process?
Oh, man, this is such a crazy question now that we've lost, well, I don't, I don't know if I'd say, lost our city manager. We no longer have a city manager and now we're going to be waiting for our temp, uh, I guess, yeah, temporary city park. I'm just, I, I'm very nervous about this election because of the current events that just evolved. I mean, I, I hope that voters understand how important that is, that it's very important that they do their research on all of these candidates to figure out who is actually going to stick to what they're saying and put things accomplished once they're elected. That's all I want to say for now. Now we have two YTs.
Thank you, Shayna. Uh, I think, uh, YT, uh, has joined us on a, on another connection. YT, are you there and can you hear us? Okay.
Yes, I can hear you. I'm there. Sorry.
Oh, awesome. Great. Yeah, this, this is much better. Great. So, uh, the question is to you. Um, Clarkston is in the process of rewriting its zoning ordinance. What would your approach be to that process? Two minutes. YT? Did we lose you again?
Sorry, having all the issues we take today. Uh, so being one of the council members that spearheaded the efforts for the zoning rewrite, definitely want to take a hands-on approach. Uh, I know the impact that zoning has on everybody's quality of life. Um, and, um, we want to make sure that we support that and ensure that we write it in a way that has a more, um, hands-on but inclusive process, but to have all of the residents in the city of Clarkson to be a part of and give their input so that we can, um, be more equitable city and have a, a better impact on our economy as well as how we develop the city throughout.
Thank you.
And for years to.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Clark, uh, how would you approach Clarkston's, uh, zoning rewrite process? Two minutes. You have to unmute, sir. I'm sorry. I should have asked you to do that.
This area is kind of new to me, but, uh, if I'm elected, I will research those concerns and get back with, uh, with everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, Mr. Dean Moore, uh, how would you approach Clarkston's rezoning, uh, zoning rewrite process? Two minutes.
Well, like anything, uh, you need to find out all the information and, uh, get professional help. Uh, that's what we're in the process of doing. Uh, approach it to protect the neighborhoods. Uh, we look forward to development, but it needs to be smart development. There's no specific area of the city, since we're already a, that would require a, a, uh, installation of, uh, some type of a huge development such as, uh, a new housing development or whatever, unless it's downtown. Our downtown area does need some improvements, but we need to protect the neighborhoods from, and that's what zoning does. Zoning is to protect the city. And so I want to, um, make sure that we, uh, continue protecting the city as we do move into smart development. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Councilmember Carol, um, this, as you know, the city is in the process of rewriting its zoning ordinance. What is your approach, approach going to be to that process?
Yes, I'm very familiar with zoning. I was on the Planning and Zoning Board for three years before I was in the council. And since I've been on the council, I've been the chair of the Housing Infrastructure Committee, which has dealt with many different zoning issues. So I've attended all the public meetings and all the online meetings regarding the zoning reform and heard the feedback from public. I've seen the written feedback as well as the in-person feedback. And my impression from talking to the Clarkson residents is they want more downtown development. They want more housing options in Clarkson. There's a lot of people in Clarkson, they're in apartments, they're looking for houses in Clarkson but aren't able to find them. There just aren't that many available. So I think we can encourage downtown development, encourage more housing options for the zoning reform. At the same time, we can preserve our existing neighborhoods and preserve our tree cover. So we can have more development, more housing options, but without disrupting the existing neighborhoods, without cutting down our trees and forests. And I think that that's what the Clarkson residents want, and that's what I'll work to deliver if I'm reelected to the Clarkson City Council through the zoning reform.
Thank you, uh, Jamie Carroll. Uh, so Shayna, the next question's going to start with you, uh, so please unmute. And then after that, we're going to go, uh, to YT Bell and go back down the list. Um, the Clarkston City Manager recently announced that he was leaving the city. As a city council member, you will be involved in hiring his replacement. What is your ideal candidate for this position? Two minutes, Shayna.
Man, oh, that's a good question. Um, and I'm the first one to go too. Um, you know, I, I would like to see a new city manager brought on probably within the next six months to a year, but not any sooner than that. Definitely not while the new city council is being established. Um, because I think a lot of politics are here at play. And if we are not going to take our time and do our due diligence, we could very easily appoint somebody who is not the, the most competent and most suitable for our city. Thank you there.
Thank you, Shayna. Uh, YT Bell, two minutes.
Yep.
Uh, you are going to be responsible for hiring the next, uh, city manager of Clarkston. What would you, who is your ideal candidate? What is your ideal candidate for this position?
This is a great question, Dan. So somebody that's responsible, um, that has had a history of planning or knows the difference between planning, um, zoning as well as finance. Um, somebody that has managed other departments and programs and operations before in another city, uh, comparable to the city of Clarkson. Uh, somebody that can work within the community to coordinate, uh, partnerships with, um, programs as well as nonprofit leaders and business leaders throughout the city, uh, and somebody that can ensure the financial, uh, integrity, uh, of our city, um, that represents us in the best light, um, and that can essentially work with residents day in and day out to ensure that we're providing the best service for them as well as meeting their everyday needs.
Thank you, YT. Uh, Mr. Clark, you're next. If you could unmute your microphone, sir. Um, the Clarkston City Manager has announced that he's leaving the city. What's your ideal candidate for this position? Two minutes.
Well, my ideal can, uh, uh, candidate, uh, for city manager would be they need to have a skill set to manage the day-to-day administration of the city. Uh, he or she needs to have the background to handle the needs of a diverse community like Clarkston, particularly our refugee and immigration population. Uh, last but not least, uh, finally, uh, he or she needs to have the ability to grow and develop our city as it relates to our 2040 comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, Mr. Moore, what is your ideal candidate, uh, for Clarkston's next city manager? Two minutes.
Well, we need somebody that has professional skills in, uh, in running a city. And, uh, you know, there's not a lot of unusual or really complicated issues about Clarkston necessarily that, uh, but I would like them to have, uh, experience in the International City Managers School and, uh, organization. And, um, you know, more experience. Uh, I was on the, uh, actually led the committee for hiring our first city manager and for, uh, vetting the candidates. We had a very professional set of five people that, uh, uh, knew what they were doing, included two city managers, the, uh, city attorney and, uh, uh, one of the directors of the CAB Board of Health and one of our local residents who had a bachelor's degree in economics and a, a master's degree in public administration. They, uh, were able to walk through the weeds of the number of candidates. We had 38, uh, candidates, uh, trying to, uh, become our first city manager. So they narrowed it down for the council to go through and it's a interesting process. Um, but I think we came up with the first city manager for Clarkston that was able to wade through the, the debris of our former administrators, uh, who were actually a mayor and city council. So, uh, looking for somebody that, that knows the business of running a city and, uh, can, can handle Clarkston.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, Mr. Carroll, uh, I, I want to amend this question a little bit for you since you are the incumbent, uh, and you, you, I presume have some knowledge of, of the situation. Uh, before, and I'll give you an extra 30 seconds, before telling us who your ideal candidate, uh, would be, can you, can you shed a little light on the reasons for the, for the city manager's departure? Uh, two minutes, 30 seconds for you, sir.
Uh, so unfortunately I can't go into why the city manager departed other than saying it's a mutual decision. And the reason for that is legal because the decision was made in executive session, which I'm barred by law from telling any details about what was discussed. And also because the agreement between the city manager and the Clarkson, that part of his departure was that each party wouldn't say anything other than it was a mutual decision and we wish each other well. So I hope you can understand legally, I'm not allowed to say any more than that.
Sure.
Uh, as to what, as to what I would look for in a new city manager, I was involved in the last search of the city manager. And so first of all, you need to find someone with a professional background in managing municipal or local government entities. Because obviously managing the government, the governmental entity means you have to have some knowledge of all the different departments. So we need to first have someone with the experience to do that. And secondly, we need someone that's responsive to all the different stakeholders within Clarkston. So that includes the Clarkston homeowners, you know, the diverse Clarkston population, the Clarkston businesses, the Clarkston council members responsive to the different city employees. They need to be able to hear the concerns of all these different groups, listen to all their concerns at the same time, make the best decision for the management of the city. And it really is a customer service. Uh, it really is a customer service business, but your customers are the residents of Clarkson. So you know, just like a business needs to serve its customers, I believe the city manager needs to serve the residents of Clarkson. So I'll be looking for a city manager who he or she can put that role.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Carroll. Uh, Susan Hood, two minutes, uh, please unmute your mic. Um, what is your ideal candidate, uh, for Clarkston's next city manager? Two minutes.
Yes, um. As other candidates have said, I think it's important to get someone with experience, but especially experience in a small city and hopefully a small city with diversity. Because that would be most reflective of their role here as our new city manager. I think it's important for someone to be a good communicator because communication is vital uh, between not only the city manager and elected officials, but with the community as a whole. I think having strengths in budgeting and finance is important because the city manager does put together the budget and presents that to council. So having someone with a great depth of experience in budgeting is important. And someone who is active in the community, who, uh, enjoys dealing with people and, uh, represents the city well.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, YT Bell, we're going to, uh, direct the next question to you first. So if you could please unmute your microphone. Um, what will you do to ensure, if you are elected, that Clarkston is welcoming to all residents, both new and current across all housing types?
Yes, so I'll do what I have done as a previously elected, uh, city councilwoman. And that's ensure that we have policies and we have a plan that has initiatives that are in place to ensure that people, um, that we create a sense of place here, but also that it's welcoming. Uh, one of the things that I did as a city council person is definitely supported Welcome America Resolution. But also the welcome certified, the certified welcoming, um, process here in the city of Clarkson that still, we still have some work to do there. However, it's to ensure that we don't just say that we're welcoming, uh, and have signs that say that we're welcoming, but we actually have policies to ensure that we include all residents into all processes and ensuring that also that they have equitable, um, resources, um, business owners as well as housing. So we want to make sure that we have a community that looks exactly like, um, the businesses that we have here and the people that we serve each and every day. And so a lot of that comes with, um, talking to folks, quite frankly, and figuring out what do they need in the community, making sure that our meetings that we go to, that we have an interpreter there and that materials that we disseminate are translated.
Thank you, YT. Uh, Herbert Clark, uh, the question is to you next. If you could unmute your microphone, sir. Uh, if you were elected, what will you do to ensure that Clarkston is welcoming to all residents, regardless of income and across all housing types? Two minutes, sir.
Well, I think, I think the question is, is the resettlement of refugees.
Uh, no, that, that, well, not, we do have a question about refugees, but it, the question is more broad in terms of what will you do to make Clarkston welcome, welcoming to all residents, both new and current?
What are the number of things we could do? We could, uh, we would do what we always done for the past 30 years. We, we, uh, have always been, uh, a welcoming city, uh, ever have the, uh, council in the past have done it through, also we could do it through, uh, communications. Uh, uh, let it be communicated, uh, through a welcome. We also, uh, our city is known for welcoming everyone to our city, uh, no matter how diverse it is. Uh, I would say that, I would say the basic thing is just communicating that. And so will people be aware. Uh, because if, unless people are aware of who we are and, and what we do as being diverse. Uh, uh, I think it's better that if they just made aware and communicated that to them. And then when they, uh, then when people come here, uh, we show them that, uh, love and care and respect and show them that this is a place they can live, work and, and, and like be peaceful, uh, in a city. Such as ours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, Mr. Moore, two minutes. Uh, what will you do to ensure Clarkston is welcoming to all residents, both new and current across all housing types?
Well, we, we have been all along. Um, we were moving towards a really, really great, uh, public, uh, uh, festivals and, uh, encouraging involvement in the community. Uh, pandemic has really put a damper on that. I think we need more, uh, town hall meetings. We had a culture fest that, uh, because of our streetscapes project, had to move to the, uh, uh, Georgia Premier College, uh, Georgia State Arena to, uh, have their festival. It's gotten bigger and bigger. It might be too large to bring it back to Clarkson now that we've redecorated the place. But, uh, we had a lot of going on, uh, as we moved into that construction and the pandemic hit. Um, you know, we've got, got a lot of, a lot of hurdles to go through to get people back involved. And, uh, like I say, with this pandemic, uh, hopefully going back down again, since everybody seems to be encouraged to get, uh, uh, vaccinated, that we're going to start having, uh, more community involvement. And that's, that's really going to make us welcoming. We're going to get out. Um, you know, I, I would like to see the landlords in the multifamily dwellings take care of their properties better. That's a big turnoff for people who are thinking about moving to Clarkston. And so there's, there's some cleaning up to do, uh, straighten out the final details of our streetscapes and then, uh, let the parties begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Carroll, two minutes. Uh, what will you do to ensure Clarkston is welcoming to all residents, both new and current across all housing types?
So I know Clarkston is a welcoming city. I've seen how welcoming its residents have been to me and to various other new people that come into Clarkston. Uh, so I think the way the city government can continue to support that is, first of all, as a city council member, I've always had an open door to people. No matter what, whether you're a new or current resident, no matter what kind of housing you live in, you can always come to me with, you know, an idea or suggestion or something you want to improve Clarkson with. And secondly, I would say that the city, I think, can give, what I would do using stimulus funds, some welcome packages to new residents. And that welcome package can include the basic city numbers, food call for the police department, for trash, for public works, et cetera. And then also it can include gift cards to some Clarkson businesses to encourage the new residents to patronize Clarkson businesses and become more integrated in the community. And the other thing I would say is since the question asked for across all housing types, I think we need to continue to make sure that we have all kinds of housing types and all kinds of housing options in Clarkston. Because part of being welcoming is making sure that people that want to stay in Clarkston have the housing options to be able to stay in Clarkston. So we need to do that through our zoning reform and through encouraging development so that if you want to stay in Clarkson, you aren't driven out by higher rent or by higher taxes, but you can stay housed here if you would like to be.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. I want to personally just thank all of the candidates for being so concise with your answers. It's helping us move right through this long list of questions we have. Uh, Susan Hood, uh, two minutes. What would you do to ensure Clarkston is welcoming to all residents, both new and current across all housing types? You have to unmute your mic.
We are a welcoming city as, uh, many candidates have mentioned. And one way to ensure that people, new and, uh, long-term residents, uh, feel welcomed is to lower the barriers that might exist, uh, because of the diversity of our population. And so when we set policies and procedures, we need to be aware of that diversity and, uh, consider that, uh, there are many different cultures here. We also need to increase the opportunity for new residents and current residents to become active in their community and in their government. Um, I agree that, uh, our diversity is one of our greatest strengths and we should celebrate that. We should, uh, continue to, uh, inform residents about our multicultural community. We should make that a point of pride and we should assist all residents to become full members of their community.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, Shayna McAllister, two minutes. Uh, what will you do to ensure that Clarkston is welcoming to all residents, both new and current across all housing types?
Awesome. So I, I believe that Clarkson is a very welcoming city, um, obviously because we have, you know, such a diverse population. Um, and I think we're doing an excellent job of, you know, providing for all these different, um, income size, family sizes, all of it. Um, what I would like to see though, um, and to bring more people to Clarkson, I think would, the, the biggest thing we would need to do is outreach and public engagement, community events. Yes, um, COVID has seriously put a damper on this, you know, um. But I think that would be probably the biggest way to bring in people. I mean, especially from all over to Cab and Atlanta, Fulton, if they see, oh, you know, Clarkson has all these fun events and they're outside and bring their dog and all that, you know, then they're going to be like, oh, well, let's see how much it costs to live over there. And, you know, oh, we're going to go over to refuge for, you know, coffee because we were just over there. We liked that area. Um, and it's just little baby steps like that. Um, I think that's what I've got for now.
Thank you, Shayna. I appreciate that. So we're going to move on to our next question and we are going to start, uh, with Mr. Clark. So, Mr. Clark, if you would, sir, please unmute your microphone. Our next question is, do you think the city needs more parks and green space? And if so, what are your proposals for expanding parks and green space in the city? Two minutes, sir.
Parks and green space. Yes, uh, parks and green spe- space. Uh, I'm not really aware of the, uh, the, the developments that's going on now. Uh, I take, think parks and green spaces, they need to be, uh, defined or redefined, uh, so we can, uh, so we can expand them if, if needed. I think parks and green spaces, especially for comfort.
Mr. Clark?
A green space gives you, uh, gives a person kind of like peace, uh, serenity. I think it's very important to our inner health, uh, for the parks and green spaces. So I would consider, if I was elected to the council, I would consider, uh, uh, putting that in place. So people can enjoy those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, Mr. Moore, the question is to you. Uh, do you think the city needs more green space and parks? Uh, do you think the city needs more green space and parks? And if so, what are your proposals for expanding green space and parks within the city? Two minutes.
Well, as part of our, uh, infrastructure improvements, we, uh, put a new swimming pool in twenty eleven and, uh, renovated our park, Mylon Park. Uh, we, we maintained those very well. We just did a, a massive, uh, redesign and, and, uh, uh, improvement with a, um, uh, wetlands at Friendship Forest. That's right along the, uh, uh, South Fork of Peachtree Creek that flows through town. I'd like to see us develop along the creek a, uh, a walkway, like a riverwalk type of thing. It goes from one side of the city to the other. And we have such a high, uh, pedestrian population that I think it'd be a big improvement for the city to be able to, uh, use that to get into town instead of getting, instead of getting up on Ponce de Leon and other highways. Uh, there's also a, a flooded area. We've got that on our LCI for the future to, uh, possibly develop into a park, which is, I think, about seven acres. So we've got some areas that we, we can move into and I think that i- it's time for the, uh, city council to start concentrating on that and seeing what we can do, uh, see what's available, uh, and, and what we can do to acquire that, to make these improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Carroll, uh, do you think that the city needs more parks and green space? And if so, what is your proposal to provide more parks and green space for the residents of Clarkston?
Uh, yes, I do think we need more parks and green space, particularly we need more north of the railroad tracks. We have Mylon Park south of the railroad tracks. We don't have anything equivalent to that north of the railroad tracks. And so I think that there are two main ways that we can do it. The first is we can encourage or require developers to provide parks as part of the development. For example, there, the tiny house development is providing the city with a small pocket park as part of that development. And also the Blue Ridge development that's going to be across the street from Firth Town is also going to provide the city with a small downtown park as part of that development. The second way is to, for the city to consider purchasing lots of either vacant lots or abandoned houses and turning those into parks. There are some of those in the north side of the city that the city can look at purchasing to turn into parks and, and space. And I also, uh, as former Councilman Moore said, that there is currently a plan underway for a greenway along the creek, which would essentially be a path along the creek for pedestrian access. And I think that that would be also a way to, if the city can encourage that, that will allow for more green spaces within Clarkston. We should also look at similar plan for Mylon Lake across from Mylon Park. I've heard some interest in the Lake Owners Association and possibly converting some or part, part of that to a green space in which the city could access. So there are a lot of avenues that we can increase parks and green space and we definitely need to explore all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Susan Hood, if, uh, you could unmute your microphone, please. The question is, do you think the city needs more green space and parks? And what are your proposals? If so, what are your proposals for expanding parks and green space within the city? Two minutes.
This is my favorite topic because I was head of the Parks, Bynum, Green Space Cab County and we more than doubled the amount of parkland and green space in the cit- in the county's inventory. Uh, I agree with what Mr. Carroll has had to say, that northern part of our city, uh, needs, uh, more green space and parks. And, uh, one way to do that is to acquire land, uh, where there are either vacant lots or abandoned houses. Another aspect of that, uh, that we learned, uh, through the green space program is access. Uh, improving the access to our current parks and greens is, is really important because when you don't have access to the green space, then you're not able to use it. Need more parks programs as well. And, uh, I support linking the bike trail and a walking path, uh, to our parks through our communities. So again, people have more access. You can't underestimate the value of parkland and green space to the quality of life, uh, for citizens. And so it's a very high priority for me.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, Shayna McAllister, if you could unmute, two minutes. Uh, do you think the city needs more parks and green space? And if so, what are your proposals for expanding parks and green space within the city?
Do I think we need more? Of course we need more. You talking to me? I've got plants. Of course, yes, we need more parks. Um, they did mention that, you know, on this side of town, we don't have a lot of parks. Um, that's totally true. It's a real bummer, you ask me. Um, I mean, personally, I've taken the shortcut to get over to Friendship Forest. But then again, that's not necessarily, I mean, yes, it's green space, but it's kind of, it's not like Mylon Park where, you know, it's more family friendly, you know, and, and the park we want at Friendship Forest is like, you smell. So, you know, um, I, I would love to see more parks. This is another, um, issue that's gonna greatly be affected by who we choose to be our next city manager. Um, because this person is going to, you know, taking control over planning, I mean, working with us on planning and zoning and figuring out where we have space to put these parks. Um, I mean, I'm all for parks. I don't.
Thank you, Shayna.
Right. If you, if you elect me, we're gonna have more parks and more green spaces. Oh, you know what? We're not gonna have any city managers brush in clear cutting spaces. That's not gonna happen anymore. I promise. We're not clear cutting trees. That's not gonna fly.
Thank you, Shayna. Uh, YT, uh, the question is, if you could go ahead and unmute your microphone. Uh, do you think the city needs more parks and green space? And if so, uh, what is your proposal for expanding parks and green space within the city?
Sure, Dan. So parks are pivotal, uh, as you think about enhancing anyone's quality of life. Um, as you think about like having open space for breathing, um, but also just beautification of the city. Um, and as well as smart growth, when we talk about planning, like parks are pivotal to that. And I think that, um, the previous city council, um, and those that were before me, as well as the plans that we have developed, uh, ensure that there are some parks, even if they're pocket parks, but we also have to encourage and put conditions on developments to ensure that we have more green space. Uh, and those are the things that I would do to ensure that, you know, we create that sense of community here, um, by having a place where people can meet. Uh, I do think that we have, while we have great parks here, they're underutilized and there's a lack of connectivity. Uh, especially when you think about where I reside in Brackett, on Brackett Road, um, there are no parks here. And so it's, it's a, it's walkable. You can get there. Um, but it's just not close in proximity as I would like them to be. So, uh, ensuring that new developments, um, have conditions placed on them where there is more green space. Um, but also ensuring that we utilize those parks for our events to bring people to our city, to let them know, um, who we are as, in Clarkston, as well as how welcoming we are and the events that we host here. But also connecting families and, um, people that already reside here in Clarkston. Uh, and quite frankly, that is, when you think about beautification, it also connects to economic development. And so having more green space, having more parks, um, shows people that we're growing in the right direction and in a smart way, um, to ensure that we keep the essence of the community, but also, um, provide that breathing room as well as that smart growth that we need for, um, development now and in the future.
Thank you, YT. Uh, so our next question, and, uh, Ms. Dean Moore, you're gonna start, uh, our next question, comes from a viewer and the viewer asks, Clarkston is such a diverse community. How will you encourage civic involvement and community engagement if you are elected? Uh, two minutes, Mr. Moore.
Well, I think identifying leaders within those communities and, uh, bringing them in uh, as, uh, neighborhood ambassadors to, uh, discuss things and to encourage them to go out into their community and bring other people into our discussions as well, uh, is gonna serve us very well. That, that's really gonna be the key to us communicating and, and getting involved in the other communities to see what their needs are. And again, I, I, I go back to the multifamily dwellings. I, I feel that a lot of people are afraid to report uh, issues that they may be having in their apartments, fear of retribution by the landlord. So I would like to, uh, establish a, uh, a tenant landlord commission or, uh, director or some way of, of trying to get the people that are in those apartments, uh, more involved with the city and not be afraid to, uh, report things so that we can maintain a higher level of, of, uh, of, uh, uh, quality of housing, uh, in these communities. Uh, so that's, that's all I'd like to see is get, get involved with the neighborhood ambassadors and, and expand through that, uh, channel.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Carroll, uh, from our reader. Uh, Clarkston is such a diverse community. How will you encourage civic involvement and community engagement? Two minutes, sir.
I think you need to reach out to all the different communities within Clarkston and make sure they know of the different opportunities for engagement, whether that's being on the various citizen boards, the various citizen committees, the opportunities for community feedback and the opportunities to attend the committee meetings. For example, I'm on the chair of the Housing and Infrastructure Committee meeting. When we were discussing speed tables in the neighborhood, we had our committee meeting actually in that neighborhood. So the different people in the neighborhood could actually just walk over to the committee meeting and give their feedback and give their thoughts. And I think we should try more things like that, going to where people are in all the different diverse neighborhoods of Clarkston, instead of forcing them to come to us and sit through a four-hour council meeting, uh, to give feedback. So I think if you can encourage all different communities to, you know, know about the different opportunities for engagement, know about public meetings, know about the boards that they can be on, know about how they can show up for committee meetings, and also make it easier for them to do that and not have to take four hours out of their night on a weeknight to give feedback, then I think that you can have more community engagement from different diverse communities. But it's not just asking them to come to you. You have to go to them.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Susan Hood, uh, if you could unmute your microphone. Clarkston is such a diverse community. How will you encourage civic involvement and community engagement if you were elected?
Yes, uh, as I mentioned before, we need to lower the barriers to community engagement. Uh, part of that is through enhanced communication, uh, to our, uh, different, uh, uh, communities here in Clarkston. Uh, that would include reaching out to them in their communities, translating documents into their languages, um, reaching out, as, as someone mentioned, to their leaders and, uh, using, establishing policies that help them be full participants in the community. Another aspect of that is to continue the police training on the responses to, uh, in a multicultural community. I think all of those things would help, uh, citizens become fuller, members of the community, feel safer in their community and feel more valued in their community.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, Shayna McAllister, Clarkston is such a diverse community. How will you encourage civic involv- involvement and community engagement? Two minutes.
All right. So I think the best way to engage with people is through engagement. Social media, you know, um, signs, uh, reaching out to people just walking around. Um, and, and being visible, I think, would be the biggest thing. And letting people know, hey, this is happening and you can join. You can, and, and, and no matter what language you speak, we can translate whatever we're doing so that you can join. Um, I think that would be the, the best way to include everybody. I mean, it doesn't matter where you're from, what you look like, what language you speak. You know, we're able to put content out there that's gonna bring you in. Thank you.
Thank you, Shayna. Uh, YT Bell, you are next, if you can unmute your microphone. Um, yeah, Clarkston is such a diverse community. How will you encourage civic involvement and community engagement if you were elected?
Yeah. So as a social worker, um, I am all about prioritizing community engagement, uh, especially in Clarkston. Um, despite, um, some challenges that we may have or our, our, what I would call an opportunity. And so quite frankly, we have to meet people where they are and we have to figure out from them how did they receive information and how would they would like to receive it. And so we also with that have to take on some innovative approaches. Yes, it's great to do banners. Um, and it's great to have flyers and signs, but, um, due to the pandemic, most folks are not out and about and so we're gonna have to use digital ads. Uh, we may have to even text people and get them to sign up for a system that allows us to communicate with them frequently and let them know, even our council meetings, right? It's great that they're in person and people can show up, but people with disabilities, other individuals with dependencies and just other responsibilities cannot always be present. And so we have to figure our way of meeting people where they are, if they're on social media, uh, if they're on the website, if they're at other places, how do we get that on? Similar to what we're doing today on Twitch. Uh, put it on a platform where people can go back and review it at a later time, but also engage with us in real time and ask those questions similar to today. Uh, right after being elected to the city council previously, I went on a ride along with officers. They are frontline workers. They're closest to the community. And I was able to learn about a slew of issues from individuals that trusted them, um, on that ride along. And I was able to also come back and create an MOU between Clarkson Police Department and a local nonprofit to provide adequate services and intervention and refer for individuals that are dealing with domestic violence in their language. And so we have to be, um, as stated before, more visible, more accessible by phone or email and responsive, um, to our residents of Clarkston. Uh, and ask them to be a part of that process. And one of the things I also did as a, a council member is I would always volunteer to be a part of summer programs with nonprofits in the community that would trust it. Um, okay.
Thank you, YT. We appreciate it. Lastly, uh, to Mr. Clark, if you could unmute your microphone, sir. Uh, Clarkston is such a diverse community. If you were elected to the city council, how will you encourage civic involvement and community engagement? Two minutes.
Yes, uh, don't wanna loosely use the word community outreach. Community outreach, to me, that really means what it says, community outreach. And I think that, I think that nowadays we use it too loosely. Uh, outreach is actually reaching out to the community, seeing what their needs are. My suggestion is, if I was, uh, elected to the council, and I will believe in this, is to make a platform where they can do questions and they get, and, and they look for us for answers. But they need to put their question out there. Like, instead of going to a three or four hour meeting, uh, and like voicing their opinions, they can actually voice it through, through some kind of communication from the city. Then you can go from there. Then you really know what the concerns are. And those that we can work on to change policies to make it work for them, I think that, I think that is best. Like I said, it's always about communication. That's a, that's how they build trust with us. That's how we build trust with them, by letting them voice themselves. And then, and that, those are the issues we work on. I know we set policy and procedures for the city, but we need to work on our citizens, what their concerns are.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. So we are, uh, approaching seven o'clock. We're gonna have thirty more minutes, uh, left in our forum. Uh, this is the Clarkston City Council Forum for the November second election. Uh, and our next question, we're gonna start with, uh, council member Jamie Carroll. So, Mr. Carroll, if you could unmute your microphone, sir. Um, Mr. Carroll, what is your current opinion of the Clarkston Police Department? And are there any changes that you would make to the department?
So I think overall, the police department is doing a good job. And there's definitely less crime in Clarkston than when I first arrived here. When I bought my first house in Clarkston in twenty twelve, I was broken into the first week and then they came back again about two weeks later. And about a month after that, someone pointed a gun at me in front of my house. Um, so I know that we're not at the levels of crime that we were at back then in twenty twelve. But at the same time, there is still break-ins in Clarkston, both through houses and cars. There's still areas to improve. Uh, one area I would like to see improvement in is I'd like to see an increase in the flock cameras that are around the city that, that I would like to have them at the entrance to every neighborhood so that we know if there's a break-in, the police can know when the break-in occurred and can track the cars that go in and out of the neighborhood and track potential suspects. Please, we already have some flock cameras that have helped us make some arrests. And I believe if we had more flock cameras, we can make more arrests. We also need to have more technology that allows us to track gunshots. Uh, because I know there still are some random gunshots in Clarkston and that if we have that technology, you can track down the location and have the police patrol those areas. And then also we need to have just more community feedback and more different community groups that can give feedback to the police to tell them where the problem spots are in their neighborhood. Tell them what, where they'd like to see more police patrolling or what they would like to see the police do differently. And we also need to make sure that, you know, we're supporting our officers, continuing to recruit enough officers that's a diverse, a police force that can patrol a diverse community. That's, that's what I'd like to see to do to improve the police force in Clarkston.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Uh, Susan Hood, what is your opinion currently, if you could unmute your microphone? What is your opinion of, currently of the Clarkston Police Department? And if you were elected, are there any changes you would like to make? Two minutes.
Thanks. I have a great faith in our police department. I think they are responsive and professional and they are under good leadership by Chief Hudson. Hudson. What I would like to see is the city continue to increase the officers on the street by funding authorized positions. I would like to see increased use of various kinds of technology to augment our services. I would like to see greater community engagement, and we are, we are working on that. We recently hired a community engagement officer. I hope that that will result in establishment of more community watch organizations throughout the city. That's one way to look out for your neighbor and for your neighbor to look out for you. I'd like to see also opportunities for at-risk youth, and for programs that address situations where the best response is by a public health professional, rather than a taking a typical policing response. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Shayna, to you next, what is your current opinion of the Clarkston Police Department? And if you were elected, what changes would you make, if any?
Oh, man, I kind of want to read off a script like everybody else. Um, okay, so I, I went to the Coffee with a Cop event back in July, and I've also had plenty, well, you better go back, I'm sorry. My daughter is over here.
Hey, I'm a parent too, I understand.
I, I've had, unfortunately, a couple run-ins, I've met a couple of the cops, unfortunately. I mean, nothing on my part, but, yeah, I've met a couple of the cops, they're excellent, just excellent, you know, group of, I don't want to say men, because there's, you know, obviously Chief Hudson, but I, let me go back to my script, here we go. Um, here we go. Oh, I want to, I want, if I'm elected, I will push to meet staffing targets, including firefighters, 911 operators, and police. I will pursue avenues for de-escalation created within the police, blah, 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 CPD, and I will work with organizations to expand our public safety operations, including 24/7, mental health and poverty response teams. I'm done.
Thank you, Shayna, we appreciate it.
Sure.
YT Bell, what is your current, if you could unmute, please, what is your current opinion of the Clarkston Police Department, and if you were elected, what changes would you make, if any?
Yeah, as I mentioned, that was the first thing I did when I got elected previously, is I went on a ride along. I mean, they have the pulse of the community, because they're out there as our frontline, and so I wanted to see what they saw, and also figure out the issues firsthand from them, as well as residents that they met along the way. I think, well, I don't think, I know that I'm super excited about the reduction in crime, and all of the progressive ways that the police department and the city council has worked to reduce arrests throughout the city. I do think that over the summer, we do need to create some type of program to reduce just kids, you know, doing frivolous things and getting into trouble, but also that cop and youth connection is definitely important to me. But also, as a social worker, I've advocated for this before, and I will continue to do so, and I want to ensure that we have a non-police responder unit staffed with a social worker to ensure that residents receive support, an intervention that actually addresses the problem that maybe the police officers don't have the skillset for, which is okay, it just actually intentionally strengthens our community and provides a solution to everyday problems, as well as I would definitely push for more cultural competency with the police department. You never can have enough training on how to actually meet the needs of such residents of such a diverse community.
Thank you, YT. Herbert Clark, if you could unmute your mic, sir. What is your current opinion of the Clarkston Police Department? And if you were elected, what changes would you make, if any?
Well, like Tony DeTiger says, great. I just love those police officers here in Clarkston. Trust me, I just love them. I often, they are very, very approachable, at any time, and I just speak with you, they are, what I like, what I love about them, they regular people. They're regular people, you can talk with them, actually, or communicate with them. And one thing I liked, the new addition, our K-9 officer. Love our K-9 officer, isn't that wonderful? Oh, I think we need to, I think, I think, not sure if we have one or not, I know we have a cubbyhole for the police, but we need a dedicated police department, a building, a dedicated police building. Oh, we also need to make sure they have all of the technology that they need to do their jobs effectively. Oh, I also think, and don't want to get into trouble here with budgets, but I definitely think we need to increase the officers. Everhow, if I'm elected to office, I would definitely look into the avenues and see what can, see what can we come up with to do that. But overall, I give the police officers here, with what they got to work with, 100.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And just to interject a little bit, I believe the new K-9 officer is a puppy named Donut, and he is just adorable, so.
He is, yes.
Look up, look up Donut on social media, it's worth your time, it'll make your day. Mr. Moore, if you could unmute your microphone, sir, what is your current opinion of the Clarkston Police Department? And if you were elected, what changes would you make, if any?
Well, the, the police department has really improved in the past 10 years or so, and become more people-friendly, more professional, and much more relaxed, I must say. And when I've called 911, they're very responsive. Foiled a few burglaries in my time, and encouraged neighbors to watch out for neighbors, particularly in Jamie's area. The, the people side of this, as Susan Hood has mentioned, are great, and Herb has a wonderful, excuse me, wonderful suggestion for a new police building. We had everybody bunched up in the city hall for years, and as we professionalized the city a few years ago, we were able to compartmentalize the departments with City Hall Annex for the administration, and Public Works has their own property in their building, so that's helped out tremendously. And the last piece of that is to build a new police station to satisfy them. As far as changes go within the department itself, I think that we would need to get together and, with the police department, and with the citizens, and actually have a task force that would look into some type of improvement or evaluation to recommend to the city council, and see what we can do to make, make it better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, thank you. So our next question, we are going to start with Susan Hood, and the question is, what do you consider to be affordable housing, and how do you propose to build more of it in Clarkston? We'll start with Susan Hood, if you could unmute your microphone.
Affordable housing has real definition, and it relates to the median income, average median income of residents, and comparing, making sure that the, the cost of housing is no more than 30% of their income. Clarkston has great needs for affordable housing. The good news is that we have two new affordable housing developments coming online, one is under construction right now, the other is in the permitting process. This will be several hundred new affordable units into our city. We also have a new senior housing development that is taking applications right now. So Clarkston is doing a lot in this area, but there's a lot more to be done. But one of the things that I advocate as a member of the Housing and Infrastructure Committee is to encourage developers to include affordable units in their new developments, provide incentives such as either tax abatements or density bonuses to make that happen. I would even go as far as to make that a requirement. We have an affordable housing trust fund in Clarkston, and we need to develop policies based on the community's needs. I think the best way to do that is to have a town hall meeting, so that we can discuss various approaches to how to apply that money. We also have auxiliary dwelling units that are permitted in Clarkston. This is another way to provide an alternative between renting in a large apartment complex and renting a house. These units will typically be much smaller than a house and more affordable.
Thank you, Susan. Shayna McAllister, what do you consider to be affordable housing, and how do you propose to build more of it in Clarkston?
Thank you for this question. Um, I, I think the biggest thing, or my answer might be completely different from everybody else's, because I understand what affordable means. Affordable is not more than $1,000 for a one-bedroom, that is not affordable. I mean, affordable is like under 900. And honestly, if you try to find a place in Clarkston, you're not going to find anything less than 1,600. That's not affordable. Okay, now, once we bring on our new city manager, and we did the planning and zoning, rewrite done, then we can look at, okay, we have all of this residential space, we could put this kind of development here, these kind of homes here, whatever. What I don't agree with is these big corporations, developers, coming in, clear-cutting our trees, and just completely messing up the environment to put up these big tacky apartment buildings, which, of course, they're just going to, you know, make all, all the rent prices, they're all going to be like 1,000, 1,200, 1,400, and then everybody, oh, yeah, we've got these little shack apartments, you know, you've got no view, you know, whatever, but, you know, that's affordable, we've got those for $9.95 a month, that's affordable, right? No. So if I'm elected, I, I really plan to crack down on developers, holding them accountable for keeping Clarkston affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Shayna. YT Bell, if you could please unmute your microphone, what do you consider to be affordable housing, and how do you propose to build more of it within Clarkston?
Yeah, housing affordability is different based off who you talk to, because there are different criteria and characteristics that make it affordable for me, unlike some, in connection to the next individual. And so a lot of that is your family size, the square footage, the location, all those things. And so when you think about housing affordability, it's definitely something that I support. Being one of the previously only council members that lived in an apartment complex, it's not really affordable to Shayna's comment, but I aim at making housing affordable by putting intentional conditions that were created with the community on new developments if, when we have those, because I understand that housing stability, economic affordability options are imperative for individuals to be able to function and provide for their families, as well as children, to be able to function fully in schools and perform adequately. So my steps would be to acknowledge and define affordability for our community in particular, and then create a diversified housing option plan with mixed-use development, and innovative strategies, and policies, and funding to make it more affordable. I also think that with these new developers, holding them accountable means saying, hey, you can have market rate, but also there needs to be a subset or a percentage of the development that is affordable based off our definition, and based off the percentage that individuals make, that will be residing in our community, and that currently reside in our community. And I also think, as you think about housing affordability, it shouldn't be clusters of the city where the housing market or the cost of houses is significantly higher than other sections of the city, and you can see that clearly on any Clarkston map. And so we have to create innovative ways in order to put in medium to low-income housing options in some of those higher-cost communities in Clarkston.
Thank you, YT. Mr. Clark, questions to you next, if you could unmute your microphone. What do you consider to be affordable housing, and how do you propose to build more of it in Clarkston?
That's a good question, depending on what, which direction we're going, if we're talking about residential housing, or we're talking about rentals. Let's talk about the, the residential. On the residential, we need to, to do first-time home buyers, to help people get qualified, of course, all about qualifications, work with developers to make sure that they can qualify, tap into programs and resources that would be able to help residents to qualify and explore housing options in the city of Clarkston area. Now, when it comes to rentals, we need to, those that want to transition from a rental to a home, that's, those are the things I just listed that we, that, that we could do. But those in rentals that, supplemental programs to help them. I'm, I'm quite sure that there are some governmental programs that we can tap into that will help subsidize people with rentals. They've already done it, and I know, I know, I think as, as councilman, I, I think we can tap in with those people, and we can collaborate with them, and we can find out what those programs are, and I think we can get those a help with the rentals too, because sometimes they don't want to transition, they're happy where they are, it's just that the rent is too high.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Moore, if you could unmute your microphone, what do you consider to be affordable housing, and how do you propose to build more of it within the city of Clarkston?
Well, we don't have a lot of space to do any building. We do have a couple of apartment complexes that are tied to the average median income, as, as Ms. Hood has mentioned. And Mr. Clark brings up the programs that are providing those developments to keep their, their rents low. Affordable, of course, is based on what kind of income we have. Of course, across the nation, we know that the minimum wage is stagnated at $7.25 for 20 years. I'd like to see that changed and call it the minimum starting pay, and tie that number to cost of living, like many other economic indices are. The, the way I see it, improving and possibly locking in these other apartment complexes into a low-income or mixed-income use would be to, as the new apartment complexes come online, to get the existing apartment complexes to encourage, say, one of their buildings to move into the new buildings, get funding from government programs to renovate that building or expand that building in ways that modernize it. And as they, if we do that with every complex in the city, then they will have a, a new building, and they can move another set of tenants out of one of their old buildings and do the same thing. And again, with the government programs and requirements for them to provide housing for the next 30 years tied to the average median income, I got to help the city a lot, and hopefully improve their management over the properties to make sure they don't run down. That, that happened with Avalon Apartments in 2010, and that's been doing great ever since. That was done with neighborhood stabilization funds and community development block grant funds, so hopefully we can.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Move in with those.
Mr. Carroll, what do you consider to be affordable housing, and how do you propose to build more of it in Clarkston? Two minutes.
Yeah, so affordable housing is definitely a big issue in Clarkston, the rents are way too high, the rents have gotten much higher in the last few years, and also there's a shortage of available homes for people to buy, the ones that are available at extremely high price, so it's hard for people to find both affordable owner-occupied housing and affordable rental housing. For what is affordable housing, I believe that, as Ms. Hood said, it's about 30% of your income or below is considered affordable. And so what we need to do is we need to make sure we have affordable housing at all the different price points, whether you're at the median income, you're slightly below the median income, or you're above the median income. whether you're at the median income, you're slightly below the median income, or you're above the median income. You should be able to find a home in Clarkston that you can spend less than thirty percent of your income on each month. And the way I, I have led in this issue by passing first the tiny home ordinance that allowed eight tiny homes to be built in Clarkston, which for brand new homes are below the average price point. I also passed the accessory, accessory dwelling ordinance to allow people to build small accessory dwellings in their backyard. And I think we need to build on that by continuing to allow people to subdivide their backyard so they can finance accessory dwellings. And when they build them there, the city of Atlanta is doing that. There's no reason why the city of Clarkston couldn't do that as well. And also as part of our zoning reform, we need to encourage the buildings of all kinds of housing within Clarkston. So if you, if you are a renter, for example, it increases your leverage with the landlord. If there's a new apartment complex down the block from you that you can go to, if your landlord raises your rent too high. If you are wanting to be a homeowner, but there's no new homes being built available for you, it's hard for you to find a home within Clarkston. So we need to allow for more single family homes to be built as well as part of our zoning ordinance. So I think we need to encourage development of all kinds of housing to allow for housing to be more affordable. And finally, we need to use our affordable housing trust fund to leverage that with affordable housing developers to encourage them to bring more projects like the ones that are subsidized for below the average median income within Clarkston.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. So we are uh almost done with our forum. I did have one question about climate change I wanted to get to and then do closing statements. Because we are uh pressed for time, I'm going to do sort of a lightning round. I'm going to give you each one minute to answer this question and then we're going to go into closing statements. We're going to start with uh Shayna McAllister. Shayna, in one minute, can you tell us what you, if you were elected, will do to combat climate change within the city of Clarkston? And what will you do to work uh to improve Clarkston ec- Clarkston's ecosystem? One minute.
Oh boy, hey, surprise question. Um, you know, I, I'm a huge hippie. I'm all about like recycling and renewable energies and um I, you know, I, I don't honestly know all that. I mean, I know when I've read on the internet, but I don't, I, I don't have extensive knowledge on renewable energies, but I would absolutely love to look into um changing over to, you know, solar renewable energies in our um public buildings or, you know, in our, our uh commercial spaces like refuge. You know, got some solar panels or something. I mean, you know, just simple things like that. Um honestly, I was not expecting this question and
YT Bell, uh, let me one second. YT Bell, uh, one minute, um, if you would. What is your uh, what are, if you were elected, what are you going to do to combat climate change within the city? From, as a city leader? And what are you going to do to improve Clarkston's in-town ecosystem? One minute.
Yeah, so basically we um voted on this when I was on the council um to ensure that we had clean energy, uh one hundred percent clean energy city by 2050. And so with that, um trying to promote one hundred percent renewable energy, um we can use some of the things that uh some of the candidates have mentioned, like the housing, uh the affordable, the affordable housing trust fund, funds uh to provide education, but also to provide energy efficient housing rehabilitation um for our fixed income um residents. Uh to cut back on some of that cost of the monthly energy bills. I think that there should also be um some education around reducing our carbon footprint uh in our city and what we can do around recycling, around uh solar panels, around uh green roofs, um what that looks like uh for our buildings, but also to help our residents reduce um those utility bills. Um, uh, give me the finger, okay?
Thank you. The, the index finger, to be clear. I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Clark, uh if you are elected, what will you do to combat climate change in your role as a city official? And what can you do to improve Clarkston's in-town ecosystem? One minute, sir.
I'll tell you, I just love solar, solar energy. Solar energy is the way to go. Uh, I like the, I like for us to look at uh the emissions in, intake and see what can be done about the emissions in our cities. Uh, I know that we are now uh talking about the, you know, the hybrid cars. Uh, you know, the stations, I think that's a good idea. You know, the electric cars, I think it's a wonderful idea. Uh, I like to look at, which we don't have very much of from my eyesight, a lot industrial pollution regulation uh uh in our city. But my main concern is that I, I'd like to encourage more solar energy.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Moore, in one minute, can you tell us what, if you were elected, what you will do to combat climate change in your role as a city official? And what you would do to improve Clarkston's in-town ecosystem? One minute.
Yeah, uh, we built a pool house back in two thousand and eleven. It has a huge roof and I've been pushing to uh get solar panels on that to run the park electricity and, and uh help us with that. Hopefully, uh next few years that'll, that'll happen. Um, we, we do have uh electric charging stations in discussion with the council at this time. Uh, that's, that's encouraging, but uh I'd like to see people in the community uh take advantage of hybrid cars and electric cars. We've got a few around. I've got a hybrid vehicle. Uh, I think it's important that, that everybody take this seriously. Uh, use uh, uh, you know, energy efficient uh equipment in their buildings, uh in their house, uh in the city buildings as well. So yeah, just to continue moving towards that, uh, you know, uh reducing our carbon footprint. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Carroll, in one minute, if you were re-elected, what will you do in your role as a city official to combat climate change? And what can you do to improve Clarkston's in-town ecosystem? One minute.
So the first thing the city can do is be a good example itself. I voted for hybrid cars for the police officers. Also voted for an electric charging station on city ground. So if the city itself shifts to clean energy, I think that sets a good example for the rest of the community. The second thing I would say is we need to continue to encourage other options besides cars for transportation. We all know that cars are one of the primary sources of carbon pollution in Clarkston. So if we can continue to build more sidewalks, I'd like to reduce the parking minimums for some of these developments so that the residents can be encouraged to walk or bike or take the bus. So there can be less pollution that way. And just in general, encourage people to get around the city some other way besides cars to make it more walkable. The final thing as the city ecosystem, I think we need to plant more trees within the city. I supported more medians with trees on them and it also to try to preserve our existing trees because we know that trees absorb carbon and absorb pollution. And cutting down the trees also increases pollution. So in order to encourage city ecosystem, I would encourage more tree planting within the city.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Uh Susan Hood, in one minute, can you tell us, if you were elected, what will you do in your role as a Clarkston City Council member to combat climate change? And what can you do to improve Clarkston's in-town ecosystem? One minute, Susan.
We must protect our existing tree canopy and replace trees that are naturally lost. And that has to be a major factor when we're looking to make decisions on development. We need to expand our bike trail, uh connect it to neighborhoods. We need to encourage uh that as an alternate means of transportation. We need to, uh as Commissioner Carroll said, plant more trees in our downtown. Uh ensure that there is more shade that's beneficial to the environment. And we also need to start a, a program to use more solar energy, especially in our uh government buildings.
Thank you, Susan. Well, that concludes our forum with the Clarkston City Council candidates. I'm going to give each candidate a one-minute closing statement and then I'm going to have some closing remarks and we're going to close it out. Uh so since Jamie Carroll is the incumbent, we are going to start with him. You have uh one minute to make a closing statement, sir.
First, I'd like to just thank Decaturish, thank Dan for putting on this forum. I think it's a good opportunity for citizens to hear what different candidates have to say. I would just like to, and I'd like to thank all the people that submitted questions and are watching as well. I would just like to encourage uh people to support me. If you want to see a Clarkston that's safer, growing and welcoming to all. If you re-elect me, I'll work every day to make sure that Clarkston's safer for pedestrians, safer for our residents. Make sure Clarkston continues to grow with more housing options, more jobs, and to make sure that Clarkston's welcoming to everyone, whether a current or new resident, whatever your race or socioeconomic background. I will work my best to serve you and I look forward to trying to earn your vote.
Susan Hood, uh if you could unmute, uh in one minute, uh please give us your closing statement.
You know, asking for someone's vote is not to be taken lightly because it is one of the basic rights that we have as citizens. And to ask for your vote is to ask you to put your trust in me and to, for me to be your representative in your government. So as I ask for your vote, I pledge to you to do the very best job possible to serve with honesty and ethically and never to forget that you have put your trust in me. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Uh Shayna McAllister, uh your closing statement, one minute.
All right, thank you, Dan, and thank you to all the other candidates that showed up. Um, it was great to uh have this conversation and, you know, get everybody's input. Um, again, I encourage everybody to check out my website if you want to learn more about me or my campaign or my platform. It's www dot tinyforclarkston dot com. Um, and I would love to earn your vote. Please reach out to me and I am available to meet at Refuge. Anytime between now and Election Day, just hit me up.
Thank you Shayna. Uh YT Bell, in one minute, can you please give us your closing statement?
Sure, thanks, Dan. Um, thank you, Dan, um Decaturish, um the viewers, as well as the other candidates that participated today. Again, my name is White Karenika, YT Bell. I'm credible, compassionate and committed to the residents of Clarkston. And I'll be honored to earn your vote, to become your city council member again. If elected, I'll work to make sure that Clarkston is safer, economically stronger and more welcoming for all residents by working with the city council members as well as the city staff to create progressive solutions on a responsible budget to build Clarkston into the thriving community uh I see uh as we move ahead.
Thank you. Uh Herbert Clark, you're next. Uh if you could, in one minute, give us your closing statement, sir.
I appreciate uh being with uh all of the candidates and you also, Dan. Uh it's a first for me, it's a, it has been a wonderful experience. Uh, uh, I've even learned some things myself as well, uh from some of the best. So I thank you guys. Uh, I look forward to uh be the next, uh one of the next uh city Clarkston councilman. Uh, and I'm the kind of person that don't make promises that I can't keep. So if you notice that I was sort of quiet on some issues or whatever, I like to, I, I like to take action more than I talk. As a councilman, then if I promise someone something, then I'm going to try to take action on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, Mr. Moore, uh you will be going last, but certainly not least. Uh, one minute for your closing statement, sir.
Well, Clarkston's come a long way. If you'd seen Clarkston about twelve years ago, ten years ago, uh there weren't any improvements going on. Uh, we professionalized the city, we hired our first city manager. I was involved, leader of that uh committee to uh, to professionalize the city. We've made some tremendous changes. Um, here in this past uh few weeks, it seems like everything's starting to fall apart again. Um, I've got extensive uh experience with this. I want to get back into a position of decision-making. I was involved in the uh city of Clarkston before I was on council. I've been involved after I've been on council, I will continue to be involved. And I'd like to have a vote so that I can get in and, and help lead us to a uh, a better place. Uh, there's a lot to be done, there's a lot of options out there and a lot of decisions have to be made. And we have to get all the information to make uh informed decisions. And I, I'm not, not seeing this moving forward very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And uh, thank you, first of all, to all of the candidates that are here. Thank you so much for your interest in public service. Uh, it's a very important part of our civic life, having uh people step up to run for these offices. So thank you for that. Uh, thank you to our audience for being engaged and getting involved and hopefully going to vote. Uh, on November second, all of our elections coverage can be found in two places. Decaturishvotes dot com and TuckerObserverVotes dot com. So all of the Tucker, Clarkston, Stone Mountain elections are going to be at TuckerObserverVotes dot com. You can find our candidate Q and A's, our voter guide, our coverage of this forum there. If you appreciate what we do, if you appreciate that we took the time to put this and the other forums together, please do me a favor and go visit SupportMyLocalNews dot com. And that's a website where you can sign up to become a financial supporter of Decaturish. We don't have to give us much, three bucks a month, anything helps. We really appreciate it. It helps us to provide forums and opportunities like this to keep you informed uh about what's going on in your community. Our next forum is going to be on Monday, September thirteenth, and we're going to be talking to candidates for Decatur School Board District Two. That show will start at six P M. I hope you will attend if you are a Decatur voter, even if you're not and you're just interested in what's going on in Decatur. Um, thank you all again so much. I hope you all have a nice weekend and we'll see you again on Monday. Bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.